Run Me Board of Education Meeting is called order. Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Law of 1975 inside of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was unperpetually advertised by your fine retrospect as well as posting notices in the federal hall, Run Me Post Office, Mary Walts School, Line Bagel School, Grace Downing School, and the Run Me Public School District website. Please rise to convene at the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good hope of liberty and justice for all. Ms. Bevie?
Here.
Ms. Bachan?
Here.
Ms. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Schrelego?
Here.
Ms. Panzarella?
Here.
Ms. Sam?
Here.
Ms. Baldi?
Here.
All the present Mark Iannucci Superintendent, Shawn McCarron Business Insulator Supervisor of Curriculum Instruction, Jay Yezzi Principal Bagel Galloway, Steve Haley Principal Mary Bolts, Phil Silva Vice Principal Mary Bolts, Gladys Houghman Assistant Senior Supervisor, and Frank Hyde Supervisor of Building and Environment. At this time I need approval of minutes for the regular and executive session on April This should be my beret, seconded by Dan. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Bevie?
Yes.
Ms. Bachan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Schrelego?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sam?
Yes.
At this time we are going to go into a short executive session, so I need... and it's in regards to an agenda item, so we need to go in now. We will also be going in for the other reasons, so I need a motion to go into executive. Motion me by Dan, seconded by Chaz, all favor. I have it. Oh, I'm sorry, did I say Dan? It was Dan, Mr. Chaz. I'm sorry, thank you. Hold on, going back to the... Whereas the Center of Iron and Better in the Public Meetings Act requires all meetings of the Run Me School District Board of Education to be held in public, NJSA 10-4-12B sets forth nine exceptions matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted to attend. Whereas the Run Me Public School District Board of Education has needed necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the nine exceptions to the public meeting set forth in NJSA 10-4-12B are listed below, the next to each exception is a box within the number of issues we privately discuss that call, then the exemption shall be written. And after each exception is a space where additional information that will disclose as much information about the decision as possible without undermining the purpose of the exemption shall be written. Now therefore be resolved that the Run Me Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reason at this time, as outlined in NJSA 10-4-12B. Any matter involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of performance, promotion, discipline of any specific respect of fellow officer or employee or parent public officer or employee employed by or appointed by the public body unless all individual employees or employees whose rights could be adversely affected requesting right of such matter or matters to be discussed at a public meeting. More specifically, we're going in for the agenda items on our personnel. So at this time we're going to move, so you guys don't have to move. The length of the executive session is undetermined, however, the Run Me Public School District Board of Education will make every attempt to estimate the time of session prior to convening the session, afterwards a public meeting shall convene at 7:25 PM, and the Run Me Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business. Now therefore be it resolved that the Run Me Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the Run Me Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that a discussion of aforementioned subjects may be made public at a time when the Run Me Public School District Board of Education attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any rights, interests, or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Run Me Public School District Board of Education for the aforementioned reason hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of this meeting during which the above discussions shall take place, and hereby directs the board secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the board secretary on the next business day following this meeting shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one, as explained by NJSA 47-1A-1. Action will take place on end of session since we're down to executive. We're going to go. I need a motion to return to the public session. Motion to return me by Chaz, seconded by Dan, all favors, I, I have it, returns to session at 7:21. Now we're ready for presentations.
We have a presentation tonight from the New Jersey School Boards Theme Team Challenge Group. Unfortunately, some of those members are hunting up a meeting here tonight because it's springtime and they have other activities, cheerleading, sports. So they would give a little presentation as the audience has been looking at this presentation for the past entire time. I apologize about that. It's my face, but that's fine. Hopefully Dr. McCarron has his setup and I'll move out of the way and see if we're here.
I just want to say thank you at this time to kind of show off a little bit what we've been doing in the classroom and out of it, this theme tech challenge from the New Jersey Association. This year we had two teams to accept into the regional competition. We had a team of the great boys, Alex, Ethan, and David. Then we had a team of seven great girls, and that was Maddie, Madison, and then Louise. And they did some really great things. As you'll see in the video, they made presentations, they demonstrated their prototypes, and one team, the girls Maddie, Madison, and Louise were able to get their community trashcan idea from the regional competition to the state finals, and they will present at the New Jersey School Boards Conference in October. A really cool thing that I want to tell you about before I show you the video of them, these students came in on their day off on March 22nd, because we all had a professional day, and the students were all off. These students came in and competed and spent their morning at school when they didn't have to be. So they are to be committed, they did excellent work, and I can't wait to see how things go in the future. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry we couldn't be there in person. I'm sure these students have some kind of confidence in their path, but I really do appreciate your time and hope to see you guys all soon. Do you think that you're competitive in the competition like you guys are in the future?
Yeah, I would be interested because it was fun maybe, and the competition was fun because we got to show up early for the game.
Now Ethan, what was your favorite part of the competition?
Probably during the presentation and showing up to what we thought of, and actually like to get in.
So Alex, did you ever want to try again with your steam eyed drill, or do you want to move in a different direction?
I think we can definitely try to get with the steam eyed drill. It's a good idea, but we need to make some changes and get a little more information on how to make it work, but yeah, I think we can definitely change it a bit better.
So what have you guys been working on since competition?
We called a few people, we called Microsoft, Flexing, just to figure out like, you know, coding. We called a few schools to get like website recommendations.
And making lists of things that we need to put into our trashcan and seeing what materials we worked out for them.
We've been trying to locate those supplies and finding the cheapest things we can and what would work best to make sure that the trashcan works good.
Moving forward, we have to really like get the pieces of our trashcan to figure out what goes where and how to put it all together because we are really like working out and reaching to professionals for coding goal because that's going to be the main part of our trashcan that we're going to share all the way up. And so we really need to figure that out, and then I think all of these can involve the police from the trashcan.
So those students will actually be presenting at the school boards convention in October. Their steam tank challenge idea for the community trash. There they go.
So sweet. Please thank Mr. Dora and all the students for us, and we'll see them in October. Is that Ethan? I was just letting everyone know that one of the little boys was barbie's, was barbie's stuff, so that's very sweet. At this time we're open for public comments on agenda items only. Does anyone in the public have any questions about the agenda items? Okay, two more tenets for board.
Mr. Rollman, so we all find out replacements. The curriculum committee had earlier, and we discussed some programs that are going to be offered. Once again, there's some reading that will be included, more online content rather than a specific book for a grade level reading. That information we shared with the committee, I'll also share with the board on Friday update as far as these are. Chromebook is also up and running for starting June, which also is going to be limiting the amount of things students program offer, because it seemed like there's a lot of things to be offered. Sign up 13 different things, we'll try to get them all done, so it's a little more concentrated in that effort, so we're excited about that. It's really good topics, I think. Also, we also talked about moving about some of the new things coming up next year regarding physical education requirements. The recess time, we'll move along if we can towards physical education requirements, which we have the curricular schedule with allowing getting minutes in, 155 minutes for health and PE, so the principals, myself, Dr. McCarron work on that, and lots of new ways to address this issue generally. But I don't think it's going to be that big of a problem. We also talked about prepay expansion, I remember talking about that at the meeting the last couple of months. I can say playground was a small bit of a gun. I actually picked out the floor.
Four place.
Four place, we picked that out today. Is that the ground? That's the ground, it's no longer leadership, so Dr. McCarron.
He's trying to.
So he let me pick that out, and the project manager agreed my selection status, I was happy since then. I hope I don't forget anything, whether it's drugs or pain.
You weren't really supposed to pick, I thought you wasn't.
I think you just agree with whatever I said. So we're excited about that. Couple of months ago, according to last week, we filled out school IDs, called the Life Touch last week, I believe, and they will be supplying us with some IDs for the remainder of this school year for our students to use, and then next year moving forward after September, I believe, we have, September, I believe, that they've been supposed to, right September? They won't be sending us out about two weeks later. School IDs have multi-function, also allows you to use it for lunch, things like that, library cards as well, so we'll have it all in what ways. We're kind of excited about that. Interviews, we conduct the interviews for the past several weeks, we've got a lot of additions. For us, we're a small district, we haven't had a lot of, I'd say two or three a year, except for that one year, Run Me School Board presented a lot. This year we've had a lot of interviews taking place, we have some of those candidates here, we'll introduce them in a few minutes after approval, but we're excited to have them. We still have some other personnel items to fill in the next month or so, try to keep up to date on this thing, there's going to be updates. Stay testing took place in early May, everything went well, a few glitches here and there, nothing to be concerned about. Last piece of standardized testing to wrap up, science assessment, which will be finished on 29th and 30th next week, next week, right there. So that's what we brought here. Tomorrow, we received some pictures from the mayor, updates to the building, they're coming all nicely over there, I'm very happy to see. Probably will be up next week, I think, to do another recite tour. The mayor promised us that July 1st deadline, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. They've done a great job with the end of that. And the last thing I'll talk about today, we received an email today from the New Jersey Department of Transportation and the State Department of School Resource Center, they recently announced a recipient of the 2019 SRTS recognition program, when schools were dispatched by council committee to create a new church to welcome light to school. All three Run Me schools received the bronze status, which is pretty cool, I think there's only six schools in the county, six districts in the county received that, so all three of our schools. So I commend Jay Yezzi for a certain feeling in that place, and we'll go off that next year to get a higher status. But I'll take bronze for the first year, it was pretty good. And I'll tie some of our sustainable schools thing as well, here's just some extra points in that area. And I also went to some district activities, a big one obviously is the graduation June 18th at Frank, I ask if you are going to attend, let me know, and I'm sure we should get some sponsors served.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Iannucci? If not, I'm always hard, we have technical difficulties, we'll go along to Dr. McCarron for.
Okay, everyone, the team is always busy for both business and curriculum. Right now we're trying to get all the budgeting information set up in the system for the 1920 school year in terms of curriculum, we're in the middle of state testing, finishing that out, also preparing for summertime in terms of summer reading and end of the year professional development. Two things I'm going to talk about today, one being there's been things in New Jersey School Boards Association, also in the local area regarding mercury and gymnasium flooring. So one of the things that we decided to look at as a school district was based on the years that they gave us, old school fell into the years that the flooring would have had mercury in the ceiling that they used to put down the floors. So what we did was we did a core sample test, and Frank stopped me from saying anything inappropriate, Frank and everyone over all this information that we just got this week. We reviewed the core sample test first, which told us that there was mercury in the flooring. The next thing we had to do was to do a vapor air test. The state New Jersey Department of Health states that there's an action limit if the air quality test is received at 0.8 or higher. So what they do is they come in and they do air sampling throughout all areas of the gymnasium to see where that number falls, if at all. We had the four areas tested by the scoreboard, across from the scoreboard, outside, near the boys locker room, to see where those numbers fell. Four volts, the numbers fell anywhere between 0.15, well below, all the way up to 0.23, still well below the 0.8, but the state board of health stated that action steps had to be taken. One of the things that they did tell us though is that since mercury was seen in the floors, it is now treated like asbestos. So if you have asbestos tiles, which is common depending on when a building is built or when floors were put in, they have to be abated, which means that, you know, they have to be sealed off, they have to be taken out in a certain way. There are no actions that we have to take based on the ratings that we received. It is recommended, and we will be doing air quality testing two times annually, usually it's done probably over winter break when it's extremely cold, and also in the summer months when it's extremely warm, to see the temperature difference and to make sure that those numbers remain low, if not decrease. If we were to ever remove the gym floors altogether, that is a much higher cost, it can range anywhere from 300,000 upwards depending on the type of gym floor you then choose, and that's for the abatement alone. The other option with the floor is that they do a seal it, and then they re coat the floors and re line the floors, and then you continue to do the air vapor samplings to make sure that the levels remain where they are currently. That was a lot of information, a very short period.
So it comes back to you, just the main gym?
It's the main gym, yes.
It's not the wood, like that.
The gym floor.
Yes.
The roof.
Some of us, some of us actually. Some of us treat it like regular.
So enough, the big thing is whether or not it tests it first, having it, because if it didn't, you would be able just to get rid of it. If it tested then treat it as if it were asbestos, it has to be abated appropriately. And once it is abated, you then have to do a core sample of the concrete, which goes all the way down to see if anything went into the concrete. However, at this point, there were no action steps that the district was told to take due to the fact that the numbers came in below the average of what was accepted. Any questions?
I think we'll see.
So to seal it, that would range between Frank holds it over the ballpark, does it feel like 50?
I call the Murphy Schools and Better River, we go around that, and I'll send it to Shaw.
So this is what it is.
Basically, you don't really have to do anything to it, we have to patch in, we have to patch where the core sample from, and then because of rubber's cracking, so re sealing it and re lining it is just prevent maintenance, is all we're doing.
Any other questions? Any questions come up, please let me know. The second piece was something that's on the agenda this evening, it's number 40, number 48 for approval on the finance section, is to do training with a company. Right now we have moved from close to 20 added district placements to five added district placements. In doing so, one thing we've done is, and this has been on our agenda, we've hired registered behavioral technicians through Brett DeNove and other companies to come and support our students. A registered behavioral tech is someone who's able to, is given strategies, has to go through training, has to be monitored, and to work with students who might have more difficulties or might need more supports. We pay less than we did at the district by having these individuals in our buildings, and they're excellent, and they've been great to have, but one thing that, you know, we've been discussing as an administrative team, with Mr. I, is how can we recreate that within our own setting? So one thing that we are looking to do is to have our internal instructional aides trained as behavioral techs, so that would be something that they would do an online training for, they would be reimbursed for doing that training, and then for having that certification, there could be a possible stipend that then goes along with being a behavioral tech. So looking at the amount that we're paying outside of the district, so looking at the amount we would pay by having our own internal candidates, it would provide additional supports internally, so we wouldn't have to go out. Questions?
Not a possible stipend, there would be a stipend.
There would actually be a stipend, but that also depends on who's interested in signing that. Chaz?
I think also too, next year we need to follow up and get the Educational Services Commission, because they're putting together a behavioral support group, especially for children that are living in difficult circumstances and maybe contemplating suicide, they're going to bring a really strong program to help support schools at no cost, so we need to stay in touch with them. We've actually talked today, with the senior faculty, already, you had our social work as well, and family services, we have a connection there, kind of been around for some of their meetings, but they're not going to have everybody right away, you know, you have not planned a scene, and we're very interested in providing our push trainings, you know.
Any questions on that? Will I have?
Thank you. District reports, principals, nurses, building and ground reports, and special education reports were attached, and I believe you have a question?
I have a question.
The only question I have is, I know with the whole report from a principal, as I mentioned, what we're listing in the professional development, the staff's getting, they wouldn't like to get specifics, you know, like getting training on questioning strategies, assessment techniques, classroom behavior, whatever it is, rather than just various current developments. Some specifics, thank you.
I have a question on Mr. Chris' latest report, the May 2019 report. One of her concerns is that she hasn't been able to get information from parents of new students. My question is, that's May, and we still have new students enrolling, how long are they allowed to attend school without having completed medical information on their students?
So the preschool students for next year, as she's referring to, there's a hard deadline where if they don't get the information, we would go to the next person on the waitlist, and they wouldn't be able to start school without the required information.
Is the first one fired? So are many incoming students?
If they're missing their information, they aren't even start without that.
They couldn't, yeah.
However, sometimes for parents, they might not be doing their physicals or checkups until June, July, at which point those things then come in over the summertime, which then makes, does make it more difficult because it is more paperwork that has to be go through and, you know, standardization records, things like that.
So no student is permitted to attend the house?
No proper documentation, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on those reports? How about any other reports? I'll start off by saying thank you for all of your support for the case today, we had a very successful place at auction, so thank you for donating a big ticket item.
I totally wanted, I was there, after Karen and I were like, we were like a row of machine.
I can tell you I want nothing.
Yeah. But, you know, thank you all of you for your support. Any other, New Jersey School Board or County County Ed Services?
I'm sent the candy that the board of directors getting on Friday, and I did the basket auction, and they wanted to remind our school districts that for the New Jersey School Boards Association for the convention in October, if you pre-register, you can take up to 20 staff members for your district, and those staff members also can get credits in building and grounds, special education, all different types of staff members can receive credits. The listing for the classes is out soon on the app, there's going to be an app for the convention, so they wanted to make sure that, make sure that be invited, all staff, the staff or the days that they came, so that you're not, you know, representation in the school. Just that 20 people are able to attend under that, under our registration, and I believe this is the 10th year that they have not increased our dues, our school-based dues into these destination, and they give us helpful information and they train us, and that's because they've been working with different companies, businesses that will corporate sponsors, so that's how they're keeping our costs, you know. Another thing is, I forget the name of the college, I didn't run it down, but the New Jersey School Boards Association is going to be partnering with a college nearby, one of the nearby colleges, to offer school board members online training at, I believe, no cost to us, it's like a corporate sponsorship, so we'll be able to take classes online through the university, and it will be accredited, and it will be also able to get credits for our governance and things like that, we have their mandated training. But I don't remember the name of the college that's sponsoring that, I'll get that for the next meeting.
County County Education Services Commission, at first, and there was no reaction, I didn't, I did not attend, and can testify, I can see video, thanks, I did not attend the zone for being, because I attended with several of you, the county, the New Jersey School Board County meeting, where our president was awarding a prize. Anyone else got?
I think the whole world's all on Facebook, so.
Yeah, it's all people.
I received plenty of extra board member certifications. We'll have some other ones, I'm sure. Well, while we're on that, the meeting coming up, I know that it's our retirement dinner, but we have some other, if you can make it out on June 5th, if you'd like to go to the Barrow meeting, so we could honor our board member and friend, go to meet as captain, being promoted to captain of the police department. And I'll see you there. I might be a little slow, but I'll be there. Any other, anything else? It's 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock. If you can't make it there, be there another arrangement. All right, if there's nothing else, then we will get started in business. Anything else? Property and transportation, I need a motion to approve facilities and field chairs, please.
I'll make that.
Motion made by Chad. Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Passis?
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers, all of us is along once. Was it 40?
No, that was fine.
33. Wait, yep, 33. Items numbers 1 through 33.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chad again. Seconded by Dan. That's okay, under personnel, just may have a motion and a second. Any questions there? No questions? We're right there, yep, 33. We'll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Passis?
Mr. Iannucci? Just like, the principals wouldn't mind introducing their new staff members, a new staff member, if you wouldn't mind just standing up, and you don't have to give a speech or anything, not late. Also, Ms. Wilson behind you has some stuff for you to sign. We can have you sign off on that, and you can be at our office, and then you can enjoy the rest of the greeting.
Mr. Schulego, I just wanted to say sorry to your office, just to make sure that we knew like what grade level, what area they were teaching.
Yes.
Yes, I'm Megan, she's busy with her. Sorry. Robin White and Ann Haley.
And they are going.
So Megan will be the classroom teacher in our M.D. program at Bangham. Robin will be kindergarten at Bangham, and Ann will be third grade at Bangham. So we're really excited to have her.
Okay, we're all school, also known as early child attendants or preschool. And preschool, there's something called this in September, Amanda Burke, who wants to stand up. Amanda has more energy than anybody I've ever met.
You're gonna need it.
It's a four-year-old, perfect student.
And Nicole Parent, who brings a lot of experience from Philadelphia School District, she's doing middle school, planning to be a teacher. Welcome.
Thank you, I think you'll love it here as much as you can.
One more here, personnel, we sometimes know that this job, you know, we see countless people come and go, we see countless people come and go, those are things that we recognize, some of you, Robin, four years ago, they've done this phenomenal job. We're all excited for next chapter. We're all a community school, has been a great person. And I think, you know, we all recognize Mr. Sullivan's efforts, and I would miss him. I guess he played golf with him once in a while. And I consider him, you know, not only a great colleague, but I consider him a friend who we've watched.
Mr. Sullivan, that's a lot. I just realized that we're not equal ladies. Like in our conference.
You're not the championship, you're not who we play. We're very excited.
Best wishes, best wishes.
You're gonna be surely missed. Congratulations.
Bless them. And I'm sure you're scared of Mr. Sullivan just saying. You're giving some real big shoes to the ground.
We were trying to, I was gonna say, you know, that's like an extra 15, 20 minutes, you sure? No, we're just kidding, and we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you for all you've done for us.
Still my stats for the football faculty student football game.
He can be like, you know, he can come back. Free agent, there you go. Best wishes. Under finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers 1, so this is 40. 1 through 40.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number 1 through 40.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Patty. I just want to note that per board member's request, we got a long-term lease there. If you didn't realize the number 39 there, like we wanted. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Passis?
Currently, I need a motion to approve items numbers 1 and 2.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, I missed the person. Sorry, Maria, thanks for helping out tonight, though. Seconded by Chad. Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Passis?
I need a motion under policy for all relationships to approve items numbers 1 and 2.
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 and 2. Policy is not ready.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
This throws me off anytime you ask. Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Schulego?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Passis?
You were gonna say yeah.
Yeah, you did.
At this time, we're open for a public comment. Does anyone have anything for the public? Mrs. Kelly? Welcome.
Ellen Kelly, 161 Forest Avenue. Well, on Saturday, the mayor council concluded, and eight of our council people were there, and they gave their reports, and the reports were excellent. And it was a very interesting group this year. But, so much for that. They are invited back on June 5th, and we have our wonderful Patlin Davis role to also give reports that weren't given, because 8 out of 16 did not come back. So we hope that they will come on June 5th, give their reports, and also receive plaques, beautiful plaques that we have made up for them for their time on council. And also, they get their certificates of attendance, which is something that they should add. So that would be on June 5th. I just want to let you know, it was an interesting week.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? We do have a need to go into executive session per the New Jersey School Board. And so just to let you know, we have to, well, let me get a motion first. I need a motion to go into executive. Motion made by Dennis, I need a second.
Danny.
Patty. All favor.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So we are going in for the, our job as evaluators to, for the chief school administrator evaluation. We have to compose a summary and read things, so it will be a lengthy executive session. And there will be nothing afterwards that we vote on. No action will be taken. Whereas, while the Senator Byron Empire and the public meetings act requires all meetings of the running school district board of education to be held in public, NJSA 10-4-12B sets forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted. Whereas, the running public school district board of education is in the necessary known to closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas, the nine exceptions from public meetings set forth in NJSA 10-4-12B are listed below. Next to each exemption is the box within the number of issues we privately discuss. A call within that exemption shall be written, and after each exemption, this is space where additional information, that will disclose as much information about the decision as possible, without undermining the purpose of the exemption, shall be written. Now, therefore, be resolved that the running public school district board of education will go into a closed session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10-4-12B. Any matter of having an employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance, promotion, or discipline of any specific respective fellow officer or employee, or current fellow officer or employee, employed or appointed by the public body, unless all individual employees or appointees whose rights can be adversely affected, requested and writing that such matter or matters be discussed at a public meeting. More specifically, we will be doing, we will be completing the board summary portion of the 2018, 2019 chief school administrator evaluation. Whereas, the length of the executive session is undetermined, however, the running public school district board of education will make every attempt to estimate the time of the session prior to convening the session, the actor which a public meeting shall reconvene at 8:30, about approximately, and the running public school district board of education will proceed with business. Now, therefore, be resolved that the running public school district board of education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the running public school district board of education hereby declares that the discussion of the aforementioned subject may be made public at a time when the running public school district board of education attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the running public school district board of education for the aforementioned reason hereby declares the public is excluded from the enforcement of this meeting during which the above discussion shall take place, and hereby directs the board secretary to take appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the board secretary on the next business day following this meeting shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one at the fees allowed by NJSA 47-1A. Action will not be taking place in the session at the conclusion of this executive session. Will I move again?
Tell you a free quick, just for one.
Yes, free reminder.
Pre-pay same-day dates are in each of the board members' green packets for their stepping up ceremony that they'll be having, so that way you're all invited to that. Also, the retirement dinner is also due to spend. If you are interested in going, you can see Pat Wilson regarding retirement dinner. Let's do my meeting 31st. Elections for this year, I posted all the information needed for school board elections in November. It is due by, I want to say the last week in July this year, so the petition is posted on the New Jersey School Boards Association website. Tomorrow, not tomorrow, Thursday night is Red Nose, we're doing Red Nose Day on this Thursday to address childhood poverty. We are having an event at Vol's School from 5 o'clock to 6:45. The Vol's concert is in Triton on Thursday at 7 o'clock. So that event starts at 5, spaghetti dinner, a little dance party, at 7 o'clock is the Vol's concert as well. The PTA will also, they're open during the, around the Red Nose Day. Wednesday, on Wednesday night? Wednesday night, got it. The PTA is having an ice cream function Wednesday night at 7 o'clock, and that's also at Vol's. Chad?
Well, the bottom here, it says, our next meeting is the 18th of June, but this is not graduation.
We actually had to slide that to the 25th.
25th, thank you.
I think I put that, I think I put that as an update.
Yeah, I did, we did. Nobody's going away that week, or at least I don't think so, not this year, right? June 25th, because of graduation, we had to move it, because I was feeling. Actually, it's Triton.
Chad, that's on the chat room page. Okay, so that's, we're just gonna.
A little more.
On the chat room.
Okay. We're gonna go to the conference room, because I'm sitting in them little seats